Please be upstanding for worship the mayor and the worshipful party.
Please be seated. So it is my pleasure to welcome everybody to the meeting this evening, members of the public and those watching at home. Can I ask that all telephones be put on silent please? And a reminder that members cannot use social media during the meeting, but that members of the public can. Can I just check that everybody has the following agenda documents? So the main agenda and the supplementary agenda, which is just one piece of paper. Good, thank you. May I remind members that all debates should be done through the mayor and without interruptions, as this is my first meeting as chair. I would like to make sure that the council meeting proceed fairly with opportunities for everybody to speak without disturbance. And on that subject, I think it's a good time to remind us all that we are formally committed to civility in public life. I would like us all to set a good example to others. So whilst it's fine for us to disagree politically, we must always do so in a respectful manner. I know I can rely on members to remember this when contributing today. Thank you. Members will also be aware, the by-election shortly taking place on the 21st of August 2025 for the vacancy in Cranford Ward resulting from the sad death of our colleague, councillor Sukbir Singh Dalwell. This means that we are all bound by the legal requirements of the pre-election rules during tonight's meeting. So as such, to clarify, whilst it's perfectly legitimate to have a political discussion on items on tonight's agenda, I would ask members to avoid acting in ways that may appear to be electioneering. In practice, this means that whilst members can make political contributions to any debate, I do not want to hear any members using their contributions to encourage people to vote for one party or another, or offering particular candidate, or of course not to vote for one. And to complete our list of housekeeping rules, may I also remind you that points of order can only be about breaches of the constitution or of law. May I also ask members to quote the relevant sections of the council procedure rules from the constitution when they seek to make a point of order. Thank you. We will now move on to the first item on the agenda. So agenda item one apologies for absence and declaration of interest from members. I've so far received apologies for my absence from councillor Joseph, councillor Mashisho, councillor Said, councillor Sampson and councillor Thompson. Are there any further apologies?
Apologies from councillor Dunne.
Thank you.
Apologies from councillor Yasgul.
Thank you.
Yes, Mina Nagra.
Thank you. If that's... Oh, sorry.
Councillor Handraman.
Thank you. Councillor Suraj Gaddawar, thank you. Great, thank you. May I draw members' attention to the document in the agenda on declaring interests? So may I also ask if there are any declarations of interest from members about anything on the agenda tonight, please state them now. Take that as no agenda, no declarations. In that case, we'll move on to agenda item two announcements. Do any cabinet members have an announcement they wish to make? Councillor Bruce?
Yeah, a couple of announcements. I wanted to let members know, back in June, we invited the officers and I invited some students from Cranford Primary School here who had taken part in a competition to input some ideas into, through the artwork that they produce, into our Public Realm Design Guide. I hope members here and I hope people listening at home had the opportunity, did have the opportunity and took that opportunity at the end of last year, beginning this year, to put their ideas in. And it was great to see the artwork produced by these students. And I was able to also hand out some prizes for the winning entries that will actually feature in the completed Public Realm Design Guide that should be published by the end of this year. So really exciting for them. They were delighted to be here and it's fantastic to see all the ideas that they had about what they want from our public spaces, as well as how everyone else has been able to input into that process as well. Second announcement will be short. I know I've spoken many times about our local plan in this chamber. I won't talk about the background, but simply to say, I'm delighted that two or three weeks ago, we have submitted a local plan to the Secretary of State and it is now with the inspector, ready for them to announce a public examination and hopefully moving on to adoption, if everything goes well, fingers crossed, early next year. So I thought I'd keep members updated with the process. We are at a very critical stage and I'm really delighted that we've reached this, this point. Thank you to the officers and everyone for their hard work and everyone else for all their inputs into the process so far. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bruce. Councillor Chowdhury.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Local placement efficiency for those vulnerable childrens who, for a variety of reasons, live with their families is an important duty for us in the council. Our current in-house provision is Westbrook Short Breaks Unit for Children's with a Disability and the Ride for Teenagers with Additional Emotional Needs. Both houses are subject to an annual inspection by Ofsted to ensure the care they provide meets the standards set out in the detailed regularity framework. Westbrook has once again received an outstanding rating and the ride has maintained its good rating. I'm delighted to see such a positive result for our short break here home. This recognition reflects that the hard work and the dedication of the entire team who strive every day to provide the highest standards of care and support to the childrens and young people in care in Hounslow, helping them to thrive regardless of their personal circumstances. Also, to reduce our dependency upon the much more expensive private sector, we are expanding our in-house provision. We have began work on a new home in Badfont Lane. In addition, LBH are leading a vast London project to develop a new six-bed children's home for childrens with complex mental health needs and challenging behaviour. We will be providing the asset and recruiting a specialist staff team with input from our NHS colleagues to run this provision. We recently received confirmation that our bid to the DFE was successful for 50% capital costs to renovate and remodel the asset. An offer of 1.5 million provisional and subject to confirmation. The home will release pressure on local hospital wards for childrens in crisis and deliver saving to the council's journal fund. Children's will benefit from remaining local with continued access to local support networks and the council will better be able to manage the rising cost of the private sector. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Chowdhury. Any more announcements from Cabinet? Thank you. To conclude the announcements this evening then with the sad news of the death of our colleague and our friend councillor Sukbir Singh Dalwell, who passed away after a long illness on the 18th of June 2025. Councillor Sukbir Singh Dalwell was born in 1949 and moved to Cranford in 1975, where he raised his family and where he lived for the rest of his life. He worked as a bus conductor and then bus driver for many years and was a lifelong supporter of the trade unions movement. His political interests soon led him to be selected as a councillor in Hounslow, where he had a long career as an elected member, serving over 21 years in total over three separate periods. He was first elected onto the council in 1994 and served two terms until 2002 as the Labour councillor for the Cranford Ward. He was then re-elected to the council in 2006 as a Labour councillor for the Heston West Ward until 2010. He then rejoined the council at a by-election in February 2016, again for the Cranford Ward, which he represented until the time of his sad passing a few weeks ago. In his long period as a councillor, councillor Dalwell served on the Education Committee, the Central Area Housing Forum, Vice Chair of the Planning and Transport Committee, the Terminal Five Panel, the Development Control and Highways Subcommittee, the Unitary Development Plan Panel, the Voluntary Sector Subcommittee, the Heston and Cranford Area Committee, the Pension Fund Panel, the Revenues Appeal Panel and many others. He also served on a number of outside bodies, including the Association of Metropolitan Authorities Highway Committee, the Capital Transport Committee, the Cranford Combined Charities, the Ealing and Hounslow Parking and Traffic Trust, Hounslow Community Transport and London Boroughs Transport Committee and the Heathrow Airport Consultative Committee. Councillor Dalwell had been suffering from declining health in the recent years and had spent some time in hospital since the start of the year. Nonetheless, the news of his passing was still a surprise and a shock and sadness to everyone who knew or worked with him. I know from the outpouring of tributes and appreciation that followed the news of his death that I speak for the council as a whole when I say that he was a much-liked and respected member across the chamber and we will miss him. I would now like to ask, invite councillor Shantanu Rajarath to say a few words in tribute to the late councillor Dalwell.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and welcome to your first meeting. This is always really, really difficult to stand up and pay tribute to colleagues that have fallen from across the aisle, because it makes you reflect on, certainly in Sukbir's case, a long service to our community, to the communities of Cranford, but also the community of Hounslow. He was the embodiment of the diversity in our community and that ever-present value of working hard, raising your family and doing right by those around you. And I know he will be missed and I will miss him greatly. You described all of the things that he did and what a varied career and even on the council in the time that he was here. He did so much. He was one of those that wouldn't put his hand down when it came to sitting on a committee. And he would make sure he'd go and he'd make sure he'd contribute something that would advance the work of that committee. And, you know, that's something that we should all aspire to as councillors, of course. But he was very well known in and around Cranford, having lived there all his life. Everyone knew him. And actually, on his passing, as you said, the outpouring of grief, but the number of people at his house and his funeral surprised me to a certain degree, because you don't assume that someone would know that many people. And everyone had a personal story to tell about him. And look, we joke in the chamber, having been a lifelong bus driver, that he could tell you how to get across London one bus at a time. But actually, there was that sort of bank of knowledge and that bank of support that he was always willing to give from his own experience. And it always made sense. And I know personally, as a new councillor, I often went to him just to ask advice. And he never gave it out unless you asked for it. But when you did ask for it, you always got very, very good advice for him. And on a personal level, for me, you know, you mentioned he was in Heston West till 2010. Actually, he took the decision to stand aside so that I could come forward and become councillor in that ward. And that's a talent, a skill, the knowledge that the next generation is nurturing and bringing forward. And that's certainly something that has stuck with me, certainly as a councillor, but also as leader as well. And those are valuable life lessons that I will always keep with me. He had a very, a brilliant family, who I know will miss him day in, day out. But what I would say to them, if they're watching tonight or they watch later on, is that they're not on their own. He's got a family of 62 in this chamber. The Labour Party will always be with him and we will all miss him. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Rajarath. Could I now invite councillor Gazala Butt to also speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening. We are deeply saddened by the loss of councillor Sukbir Darival. He was a dedicated public servant who worked tirelessly for the community. Councillor Darival was truly a man of Cranford. He knew its stories, its streets and above all its residents. His kindness, guidance and commitment will always be remembered. He leaves behind a legacy of service. He leaves behind a legacy of service and compassion. Councillor Darival will be missed and his contribution will not be forgotten. Our thoughts are with his family and loved ones. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Butt. Could I, could I ask if other members would like to speak? Councillor McGregor, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I rise today in a spirit of sadness, on behalf of the Conservative Group, to pay a tribute to councillor Sukbir Darival. I've served alongside him on this council for many years. And while we came from different political and cultural perspectives, I always respected his calmness and his thought, and of course, his kindness and his genuine commitment to the people whom he represented. And he was genuine. He was of the people. And he cared deeply about his community. And that showed in many ways, he conducted himself, both in this chamber and outside of it, over a long period of time. In many respects, he had the qualities of what we might call a gentleman. And that's something that brings a great deal of credit to him and to the people around him. In that respect, I recall serving alongside him on various committees and panels over the years. And Sukbir, when it came to the point, would firmly but quietly make the case for his residents. And the thing I liked so much about him and which I shall miss is his sense of common sense and decency. He was a good person to work with. And he brought that common sense and decency into our debates. Now, it's important to understand that his was not a loud voice, but I think one that everybody in the chamber respected. And when he spoke, we listened. On behalf of the Conservative Party, I want to pay tribute to him in terms of his work here. I always found him fair-minded, always courteous, and with a good sense of humour. And he and I had a lot of discussions in the old chamber and chatted before and after meetings quite happily. And here, I shall, I shall miss seeing him and having a chat with him about what was going on in his part of the world. He had a good sense of humour, even when there were political tensions in the chamber. So he didn't allow that to get in the way of a nice comment and so forth. It's interesting to think about Sukbir in terms of his passing, because it's a complete loss to the council. Someone of his background, someone of his ability, someone, someone of his looking to the future and looking to people to help is something that we should all admire. On behalf of my Conservative colleagues, I want to extend to all of you our heartfelt condolences. And those go to his family, his friends, and of course, his close colleagues in the Labour Party, of whom one especially, Jagdish Sharma, whom I know will miss his friend of longstanding. It's, in many respects, a sad day to be saying this, but for the record, he will be remembered with respect and fondness by many across the chamber, because he was what he was, a gentleman.
Many thanks, councillor McGregor. Councillor Garryle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I must admit, that was slightly emotional hearing councillor McGregor's contribution. Thank you for that. It's, it's a very sad day. Councillor Darival was someone that I've known, talking about the old chamber and the old civic centre. Since I was a young boy, my father served alongside him as a councillor. And when I was very young, he always made sure whenever I visited the old civic centre, I had drinks or sweets. And actually, even when he used to sit right here, it's odd not turning to my right and seeing him here next to me, he always had the best sweets. And he'd always give them under the table, just to make sure that he wasn't interrupting the meeting. But that's because he was a polite man, he was a gentleman, and above all, he was almost like a father of the house. He always took care of everybody. He never had a bad word to say about anyone. You know, all of us in this room can attest to politics very often being a blood sport. You're kicking lumps out of each other. You know, you're, you're looking at your opponent's weak points, you're pivoting into them and what have you. But he always kept it very cordial with everybody. And that's not because he had political, didn't have any political differences. He did with a lot of people. But he always had a certain manner and respect, and that will be missed for sure. He, he welcomed me into Cranford in 2022 with open arms. And when I was out on this week, in this weekend, walking around in Cranford, you know, we don't want to breach any sort of rules, I was in streets and areas where you didn't need to look at the canvassing sheets to make, to see who lived in a particular house. He knew them all, Madam Mayor. He knew everybody on the door, how many grandkids they had, when their last weddings were, what their interests were. I mean, even the last time he spoke to them. And it was literally every door. It was incredible. You know, his body might have given up on him in the sense that he couldn't knock on doors like he used to. But he would often be in the car and tell you things and be a quarterback for the entire session and tell you intimate details and stories about people. And it showed that, you know, he never really lost an election. He was always a serial winner at the ballot box. That's because he was a man of the people, for the people, particularly in Cranford. So my heart goes out to his family. I know they're still mourning the loss incredibly, because it is such a big loss, just like all of us here tonight. But his legacy will go on in Cranford. His legacy is all of us here, particularly some of the younger generation that he always took care of. You know, councillor Rajarath spoke about turning to him for advice. A lot of us did growing up and even until his final days. So he was a great man. You won't see many like him again. And Cranford mourns the loss of councillor Sukbir Darival. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, councillor Garryle. Any other speakers? Thank you very much. In that case, I would now, on behalf of all members, like to extend our thoughts and condolences to our friends, councillor Dalawal's wife, family, and many friends. We will now stand for a Thank you. Now move to agenda item three, minutes of previous meetings. We now come to the minutes of the meetings of the council held on the 26th of November, the 25th of March, and the 27th of May. May I ask members if they have any corrections that they wish to propose? No, so I'll take that as agreed. Thank you. And now, are there any matters arising from the minutes? And can I remind you that this is just for clarification, for clarification, not to reopen the debate? Yes. Councillor McGregor.
I note in the minutes that the removal of councillor Gill from the Conservative bench to the Labour bench was met with loud applause. This reminds me of the sort of communist-type response, where ovation, standing ovation, and prolonged applause. I don't think this is appropriate to the minutes of a London Borough council. We don't need that sort of political stuff.
Point taken. Thank you very much. Noted.
Oh, Madam Mayor, before I finish, if I'd known that it was really this, you would have heard me booing.
Thank you, councillor McGregor. May I now ask members to agree the minutes, bearing in mind councillor's comments? Thank you. Agenda item four. May I ask members if they have any new petitions to present? Councillor Lukey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a petition here signed by 95 median residents close to the pedestrian access on Wood Lane North of the Nishkam School in Ostley. It's meant to only serve pupils travelling to school via public transport, walking or cycling. That is not the case. Drop-offs and pickups by car are meant to take place at the Park and Stride sites, currently only on the Tesco Car Park. So this is calling for the closure of the pedestrian entrance on Wood Lane and effective marshalling on Cyan Lane is requested to ensure systemic resolution before there is a serious incident or fatality. For those who want to see a bit more of this, I would say, go to www.algro.org.uk and you'll see the petition and you'll see the numerous comments as well from, from those who have signed it in the neighbourhood.
Thank you, councillor Lukey. We now move to the second part of the process. We have no petitions for consideration at the council meeting. Oh, sorry, my apologies. Were there any other petitions? So we now move to the second part of the process. We have no petitions for consideration at the council meeting itself this evening. So may I now just ask members to note the petitions listed in the report? Thank you. Agenda item five. We now come to the agenda item five, which is a reference from the last meeting of the Licensing and General Purposes Committee meeting held on the 8th of July 2025, and asks the council to approve the Statement of Licensing Policy. I would like to draw members' attention to an error in the Cabinet title in the report. The Cabinet member's portfolio should actually be 'Community Safety, Customer Experience and Information'. There was a typo originally. And I would also like to remind members that under our recently agreed revised council procedure rules, proposers of reports may speak for five minutes, but all other contributors will speak for up to three. So can I now invite councillor Pratam Garrawal to propose and introduce the report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The revised draft licensing policy sets out the council's approach to exercising its statutory responsibilities and functions under the License Act 2003, 2003, yeah, and its approach to regulating licensed activities in the borough. The policy must be renewed every five years, and the current policy ends October 2025. The draft licensing policy strengthens the link between the licensing and the other council policies. It provides additional information for applicants, residents, and members about how the Licensing Act will be dealt within Hounslow. A number of modifications have been proposed to the policy. These included making the policy clearer overall and two significant changes. License policy has been drafted so that it's concise for the user. It is locally focused and reflects a wider range of council policies. New sections added to the Statement of Licensing Policy, these include adding a richer and a more detailed use of local plan, which now has sections on each town centre reflected within the SOLP. Following the agreement of the policy and associated appendices at the License Committee on 8th of July, I would ask the Borough Council to approve the policy and associated appendices. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Garrawal. Can I ask for a second, councillor Rajarath?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've seconded and reserve my right to speak.
Thank you. Before we get to the debate part of this item, in the case of reports from Cabinet or from a committee, as an item and as in this item and the next item, our new council procedure rules make a distinction between questions and debate, and require questions to be asked first and then the usual debate to follow afterwards. So this means that questions that were previously asked of Cabinet members and committee chairs as part of the debate itself must now be asked beforehand. I've taken legal advice from the monitoring officer, who has advised that any member may therefore now ask one question of the relevant Cabinet member, in this case councillor Garrawal, and therefore, do any members have a question that they wish to put to either, to the Cabinet member? Councillor Emesley.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Can I welcome councillor Garrawal back to the Cabinet and to his place? Just a quick question. Appendix nine states that only 13 people actually responded to the consultation on this licensing policy. This is obviously a really important document and affects the entire borough in huge ways. And could councillor Garrawal tell us what the process was for promoting this consultation, why he thinks it was such a low turnout, and what we're going to do to make sure that in future, these consultations get a lot more responses?
Thank you for the question. And the License Committee, 18 December 24, eight weeks publication was done for the consultation. And most consultation was done online, sorry, online, and emails were sent to the consultees. I think the statutory responsibility authorities were all informed by email and other departments of council. All neighbouring councils were also notified and consulted on this. Overall, this has been an effective consultation strategy. But like you said, 13 responses were received. While this is a relatively low number, it's typically the most boroughs when hosting licensed consultations, which despite the use of plain language, are necessarily complex documents.
Thank you, councillor Garrawal. Councillor, I think councillor Bidoff is next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In February, the London Assembly asked the Mayor of London to encourage councils to add participating in the Ask for Angela scheme to venues licensing conditions. This would mean it would be enforceable as part of routine licensing visits. We also called for it to be added, and I'm disappointed, to premises here in Hounslow. Can I ask the Cabinet member why it is missing from this new licensing policy, and if this missed opportunity can be added tonight? And if not, whether it would be added to a future policy to support anyone who feels vulnerable when out in pubs and other licensed premises?
Thank you, councillor Midde. As I've just taken over this portfolio, I was not aware of that thing and I was not discussed that thing, to be honest. So I'll run back to you on that one, yeah?
Thank you, councillor Garrawal. Councillor McGregor.
Madam Mayor, thank you. I have a question of appendix F, the relevant legislation. And this includes a non-exhaustive list of relevant legislation that licensed applicants advise to review. Well, if you look at page 179 of the agenda tonight, or if you have it separately, page 31 of the Licensing Policy document, the question I'm going to ask is, if you think you need to go through all this lot, how many licence holders and how many licensed applicants do you think stop before they actually get any further? Because this list requires a huge amount of legal support, and I don't see the purpose of it. I also, I'm not quite sure why licensing was taken away from the magistrates in the first place, because this is a huge bane for the council. So my question is this, would he care, not necessarily tonight, but sometimes he should, to comment on his view about relevant legislation on page 31 of the policy or page 179 of the agenda? Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, councillor McGregor.
Again, thank you, councillor McGregor. I will definitely write back to you on this one.
Thank you, councillor Garrawal. Any other member questions? Okay, then that moves us on to debate for the report. So anybody that wishes to speak?
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have to firstly thank all the work that's gone into putting together the policy and the cumulative impact report by our officers in conjunction with the consultants make, who did a lot of the heavy lifting on this, on this 300-odd-page report. I think this is my, I don't know, I've spoken about this topic a while, and I'm really glad to see that some of the recommendations that I've made to previous reports have been included. I understand that I represented or I chaired more licensing panels than any other councillor in, in the last in the last municipal year, and having a documentation like this is really useful. However, I think we still need to do some work on guidance for applicants. We've seen many people come to licensing panels, not understanding what needs to be done. This is all discussions I've already had with officers. And it's one of those roles that we, as members of that committee, need to take quite seriously because it is a semi-judicial role. And the decisions that we make in any panel are instrumental to the makeup of our borough. We are one of the third, we're the third largest licensing authority in London after Westminster and Camden, which is a really big responsibility for us. And that night time economy and the diversity of activities that we have in our borough are a real testament to our ongoing culture and community. But it's really important that we stress to applicants that when we grant a licence, we're engaging in a contract, a kind of community contract, that we expect them to be good corporate neighbours, I've used that phrase quite a few times. And we need to make it understood to applicants that when we put conditions on to a licence, this isn't done to impede their business or their livelihood, it's about taking the considerations of our licensing objectives into consideration. There is an awful lot of information within this, and I think during the committee, we had a lot of questions. I'm very surprised to see that the Chair of Licensing isn't here this evening, and a little bit disappointed because it is such a vital document that they should have or he should have been here to be part and witness to. So I hope he's catching up on YouTube wherever he is. And I think there's a lot of work going into this. We had questions about the Cumulative Impact Report. We know that there's a lot of issues around street drinking, there's a lot of aspects into, well, if we could have a licensed pub in an area, would it then impact some of that more on social behaviour? The pubs that we have in our community are a real focal point. And so having documentation like this is really vital to our ongoing support, and I commend it. Thank you.
Many thanks. Just as a quick, I'm sure councillor Raymond has a good reason for not being here this evening, just note that. Anybody else wish to contribute to the debate? Councillor Bruce?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I was going to say the same thing. Everyone is entitled to a holiday, aren't they? I think that's absolutely fine. Councillor Giles spoke really well on that, and I agree with much of what she said. I think actually, from what you were saying, you've actually answered your colleague's question about the relevant legislation there. While I do agree, perhaps, and this goes to everything that we do as a council, how can we help people do things in a much more straightforward way and make it as easy as possible for them to do it? We do need to put something on those applicants. They do need to do some work and to understand all the things that they have to do in order to meet the requirements in making the borough safe for licensable activities. I think that's really important. So I think, you know, the thing back to councillor McGregor would be, which of those relevant legislation would he remove that he doesn't think is important? Is it the Health Act or the Food Safety Act or the antisocial behaviour crime? I mean, you know, there are some important things there. I don't think we're going to expect everybody to understand every single thing, and having support from maybe legal advice or even from the council to understand that as best possible in order that we can facilitate people getting a licence is really important. But I think that's important and that needs to be there. The last thing I'll say is, councillor Gariwal mentioned it, about how it has been strengthened, the local plan focus has been strengthened in this, and I think that's a really important thing. It is difficult sometimes, you know, I've been a councillor for 15 years, I've been chair of licensing, chair of planning, I've now got the portfolio I have. Understanding that difference between licensing and planning and how those things are linked, but how they are separate, and it's important that both are taken into account, and the role we have in terms of planning, but also what licensing can do and how we need to make sure that that's strong in order that people are following both of those principles of the council, and ensuring our borough continues to be the third and maybe even the second, you know, or the first perhaps, you know? Our night time economy is good, but I would want to continue working to make it the best possible and if not number one in future, that would be really good. So thank you, councillor Gariwal. Thank you for the work of the committee, and thank you councillor Giles as well for all that you've said.
Thank you, councillor Bruce. Councillor Rajwa?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure taking over Westminster will be possible, but we'll try, we'll try. No, there's always a name, yeah. Thank you, councillor Gariwal, to you and the team and the licensing team. Councillor Giles, you're absolutely right. It's a big piece of work to renew this. I remember when it was first brought in, it took the best part of a year to bring in, and so it's a very, very good piece of work and testament to the work of the officers on there. Notwithstanding the fact that councillor Gariwal said he would write back on a couple of things, you know, some early insight, if I may be able to offer it. To your question, councillor Emsley, around consultation, whilst I acknowledge 19 people actually responded, if you look at the number that are aware of it, actually clicked on the pages, looked at the documents, that's much higher, that's 383. We know we're on a journey in terms of consultation. It's not always going to be perfect, and you can't necessarily make everyone respond, but actually having some awareness that this is there is quite important as well. I take on board, councillor Bitoff, your point around Ask Angela. However, I would just say, whilst it can be something that we can look at, it is a national campaign, and I think operators are taking it up. And I think as a good operator, I would want to see Ask Angela in operation in an establishment that I was drinking at. Now, I appreciate you nodding your head, but it's a two-way thing. So it's not just the council putting it on as a mandated condition on every licence, but that is something we can definitely look at. It is about promoting Ask Angela amongst the operators that exist in the borough and making them aware of the fact that actually people are more likely to frequent their establishments if that is in place as well. Councillor Bruce has made the point around the legislation, and, you know, councillor Giles, I completely agree, you know, this is a contract with residents and licence holders as well. There are many licensing agents out there. Part of what, expanding on what you said actually a little bit, they also need education on how to operate within the Licensing Act. But all in all, I think it is a very comprehensive report. It gives the Licensing Committee and licensing panels some basis on which to do their work, and it is a solid foundation for our residents to know, certainly in terms of the cumulative impact area, that we take things like street drinking very, very seriously. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Rajwa. Yes, councillor Chowdhury.
Thank you. To add, as a member of the committee, we did look at the consultation and how people were able to respond to it. Is that something you're actually really passionate about? And the advice we were given is that the officers tried to make it as easy as possible. However, there are legal wordings that they have to use, otherwise the licensing question won't be put. And on that basis, I was satisfied with what they came up with. And, you know, it's something that I'm really passionate about, ensuring as many people as possible are able to respond. And as councillor Rajwa said, the number of people that clicked on it was high, but obviously the amount of people who responded perhaps was low. So it would be interesting to look at what we can do in the future, maybe not on licensing, maybe something else, I don't know, but just to see how we can ensure that people are engaged and people are aware of it.
Thank you, councillor Chowdhury. Councillor McGregor?
Well, listening to the last few comments about consultation, let's recognise the consultation, what it was. It was an abject failure, which cost the council a huge sum of money to do and gave us pitiful results at every level. That is what happened. And I do respect the point that was being made, that we do need to do better, but we're starting from a ground zero, not even a ground plus two or three or four, 19 out of 320,000 residents of all ages in the borough, all of whom at some stage in their life might be concerned with alcohol. Bless us.
Thank you, councillor McGregor. If there are no further wishes to speak, then councillor Gariwal, would you like to sum up?
I'd like to thank you, everybody, for the contributions, and move that go, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. In that case, can we ask members to vote? Can I, it's the one recommendation to accept the report. Can I ask all those in favour, raise your hand? All those against? And any abstentions? Thank, that's not a word, abstentions. It's been a long day. Thought I'd get away with that, but no. Mayor, thank members for their contributions. I'm not laughing too hard. Next on the agenda is item number six, the scrutiny annual report 2425. We now come to agenda item six, which is the annual scrutiny report 2425. I would therefore like to invite councillor Sayar Raza as Chair of the Overview and Scrutiny Committee to introduce the document. Councillor Raza, you have five minutes.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everybody. It's now a quarter of a century since overview and scrutiny committees became a feature of English local government. For the last four of those years, I've had the privilege to serve as Chair of the Housing and Overview and Scrutiny Committee. As such, it's not only my constitutional duty, but also my pleasure to introduce the annual scrutiny report for 2425 and municipal year to the Borough Council. In my time as Chair, I have seen the work that many councillors in this room have undertaken to improve services, to hold the executive to account, and to ensure that people of the borough are at the front and centre of thinking of both the council and our partner organisations. The annual report, you have in front of you of the details of the work of the last municipal year. I would like to put on record my thanks to those councillors who served on the committee and in many cases on scrutiny panels as well. Councillor Meir, my Vice Chair, councillor Butt, councillor Emsley, councillor Gold, Nagro, Sadi, who are also panel chairs, councillor Tack and councillor Yates as well. I would like, I would also like to thank those scrutineers who focus on developing high-quality recommendations through their involvement in scrutiny panel deep dives. Councillor Hamid, councillor Bitoff, councillor Chowdhury, councillor Chopra, councillor Farmahen, councillor Gill, councillor Gariwal, councillor Heer, councillor Joseph, councillor Cameron, councillor Kiani, councillor Lambert, councillor Said, and councillor Tariq as well. Throughout my time as Chair of the OSC, I have always said that scrutiny is an important element of good governance. In 2425, OSC continued to hold to account, to review and develop policy and look beyond the council. The Metropolitan Police, local housing associations, and the West London NHS Trust were all guests of the committee, further evidence of our desire to emphasise what matters most to local residents rather than limit our attentions to the workings of the council alone. Of course, we also scrutinised the council. An extensive focus on the finances of authority was supplemented with investigations of both universal and targeted services from neighbourhood enforcement services and resident experience through council housing to special educational needs and disability services. The committee looked widely at the business of the council. The work of the council's three scrutiny panels allowed us add depth and breadth. I would urge all members to consider the work on the primary school engagement and child disadvantage commission and contracts management in adult social care and flood resilience led by councillor Emesidu, councillor Riars-Gill, and Samina Naga, councillors Samina Naga respectively. They are excellent pieces of scrutiny with meaningful recommendations. For some years now, we have spent more time focusing on the impact of our recommendations. Members will see progress made, not just this year, but over previous years as they reviewed our annual report. Of course, it's seldom the case that recommendations are seldom made, accepted, implemented, and evaluated in a single year. Scrutiny is a long-term commitment and is pleasing to see recent changes to our work with housing associations that emerge from the committee's recommendations in 2024. We continue to focus on purposeful recommendations, but also recognise productive relationships matter a great deal. Looking beyond Hounslow, members will know of examples of weak scrutiny and toxic relationships between scrutineers and executives. This isn't something I recognise locally. The relationship between scrutineers and scrutinised is important, and cabinet members have played their part in ensuring scrutiny has a chance to engage early and effectively. We may not always agree, and this is as it should be, but our discussions are overwhelmingly polite, professional, and importantly, productive. I would now like to turn to the findings of the Centre of Governance and Scrutiny. The Centre has given us an independent perspective on scrutiny and a council engagement with scrutiny. The Centre said, scrutiny in Houser is effective. Scrutiny in Houser carries out work relevant to local people. Scrutiny in Houser contributes towards improvements in residents' lives, and scrutiny in Houser has impact. I'm pleased the Centre recognised the work. Those involved in scrutiny locally have achieved over the years. We can't rest on our laurels, though, this municipal year. I look forward to scrutiny achieving more. I look forward to working with members in this room and partners across the borough, and I look forward to ensure we continue to focus on what matters for the people we serve. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I move this report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Raza. As this is a report of the Overview and Scrutiny Committee, much the same as the previous report, it's now over for members if they wish to ask any questions of councillor Raza. Are there any, oh, sorry. Oh, I'm so sorry. I forgot to ask councillor Rajwa to second the report, please.
With pleasure, Madam Mayor, but I reserve my right to speak.
Thank you. Then that last bit again. So if anybody has any questions to ask of councillor Raza, please ask them now. Councillor Emsley?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'm glad you seconded that, otherwise that would have been a disaster. Last year's scrutiny report gave a pro update on recommendations made to the Housing Department since 2021. It revealed that of the 15 recommendations made, just four had been completed in that report. This year's report, though, doesn't contain a status update on any of those recommendations. So my question is, why is that missing? Could councillor Raza update us on how he, as Chair, tracks the implementation of recommendations? And can he give an update on the latest status of those 11 outstanding recommendations from 2021 and beyond?
Yeah, thank you for that, councillor Emsley. As you know, last year, we did also look at the housing strategy report moving forward. So I'm pretty sure it'll be within that strategy where some of those recommendations were coming.
Councillor McGregor?
Madam Mayor, I note on page 329 of the agenda that there is a risk report. And the risks associated with Borough Council failing to receive or engage with the scrutiny annual report have been assessed as follows. Actually, I don't see an issue of any kind. Because it is quite clear that scrutiny has failed. I would like the Chair of Scrutiny to let the council know at the next council meeting what risks mitigation actually takes place to ensure that scrutiny does its job.
Yes. Well, it needs to come in the form of a question at this point, councillor McGregor. Could you put your microphone on, councillor McGregor?
Madam Mayor, thank you for your indulgence. What I'm asking councillor to do is to look at the risk factor on page 329 and give us details of mitigations that he thinks are appropriate to the work he's doing.
Councillor Raza, would you like to answer that?
Okay, thank you, councillor McGregor. I think we do a lot of mitigation work. I just sort of mentioned what CFG just said to our report. It is a very, very positive report. And work we do right across this chamber through all committee members, it is robust. And I'll just leave it for there, councillor.
Thank you, councillor Raza. Any further questions? Okay, now we are open for debate, for Okay, now we are open for debate. Is there anybody that wishes to speak? Councillor Emsley.
Me again, sorry, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much. Yes, I was a member of the Overview and Scrutiny Panel last year. I just want to start by giving my thanks to Paul Probert, who's the council's Head of Policy and Insight, for all the expert support he gave us, the committee, over the past year. I don't think we could have done it without him. I'd also like to reciprocate my thanks to Councillor Raza for his chairmanship. I think it's fair to say we don't always agree, but he has approached it in a collaborative and cross-party spirit and we have been able to make recommendations to the council where we don't think that they're up to scratch. So I thank him for that. I do support the crux of this report and it does make some sensible recommendations. But as I alluded to in my question earlier, I do remain concerned about the relationship between scrutiny and the administration when it comes to implementing some of those recommendations. I note that Councillor Raza didn't really answer my question about why we're not tracking previous recommendations past, past the previous year in the report. And coming back to the recent Centre for Governance and Scrutiny Report into how our scrutiny system works, it did also say that there is an inconsistent recording of recommendations, which makes it difficult to review and evaluate them. I actually think it's sometimes worse than that though, because as we saw in last year's scrutiny report, recommendations are accepted at this meeting and then failed to be implemented. And if the Cabinet refuses to implement our cross-party recommendations, what's the point in making them in the first place? Page 14 of this report states that the committee will ask for regular updates in order to assure us of progress. It's not quite clear what happens if those assurances don't come. And if the assurances do come and they say that there is no progress in implementing a recommendation, it's not quite clear what we do then. So scrutiny has a critical role to play in this council, particularly given the acute financial stress that Hounslow is currently facing. My wish for next year's scrutiny report is that we'll be able to stand here and say, our committee actually showed some teeth over the next municipal year and did hold this administration to account. I fear this year, we can't quite say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Emsley. Any other contributors? I'll take Councillor Giles.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Much like last year, it's amazing what you can do as an opposition, I have to say. Sorry, let me start again. It's amazing what you can do as an opposition. Last year, we had the Housing and Environment Panel come to us with a biodiversity and flood resilience deep dive. And in more or less this same meeting last year, I berated the fact that within this deep dive into flood resilience, there was nothing said within it on fluvial flooding. And I have to thank Councillor Bitolf for pushing to have myself and Becky Kendrick from the Thames Landscape Strategy come to present to one of the first meetings that was held on this topic. And I can understand that there is a lot to digest here, but in the, I have to say, two points, first of all, is that the report has still named the biodiversity and flood resilience report. So we might need to have a look at changing the title on the document. But also the second one is that I struggle with some of these recommendations because it has, it's not taken into consideration the work that's currently being done and it still alludes to a lot of misunderstanding with the role of Thames 2100 and the execution of that plan. So locally, we have a new plan called the Joint Thames Strategies. And this is uniting the three strategies of the Thames Landscape Strategy, the Thames Strategy Q to Chelsea, of which we are both partner members, and the Thames S3 Partnership. And we have joined together as a result of being awarded a 1.7 million pound grant from the Thames Regional Flood and Coastal Committee to look up and down the Thames, yeah, to look up and down the Thames from Surrey to the sea, to look at what flood resilience and flood mitigation measures will need to be implemented by each local authority over the next, well, by 2030, 2060 and 2090. This is a long term plan and also what we are doing now will help with drought resilience that I've been told for the next 10,000 years. Whether that's true or not, I do not know, but the impact of that work was shared with, with the scrutiny subcommittee. And I'm really disappointed that that doesn't seem to have filtered down into the final recommendations. We're partners and because of our border on these, on the two strategies, we have a lot of, a lot of input and a lot of resource at our fingertips. So I would recommend that we add a few more of those suggestions in the work being done. More locally, councillor Dunn and I have in the last year brought together a cross-party, cross-departmental Thames Strategies Working Group, which brings together the two of us, co-chairs, and we bring together officers from planning, traffic and transport, flood risk management, resilience, parks and community engagement, to update officers firsthand on the work that we've been doing as part of the Thames Landscape Strategy and the wider work of the Regional Flood and Coastal Committee. This is really vital work that we're doing and I would recommend that actually that information, that knowledge that officers are being imparted with is then escalated back up to members. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Giles. Councillor Rajua.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I will, without making this into an argument, I will say I'm slightly confused by some of my, some of the opposition's responses to this. Either it is a failure or it isn't a failure or half a failure, maybe not. I'm not sure about that, but actually, let's, let's keep it constructive for the purpose of the report. I think this is a good report. Councillor McGregor, to your point, that risk on page 329 actually talks about the risk of council not receiving this report. It doesn't talk about the effectiveness of scrutiny overall. So we just need to be really clear about that. Look, I think, and I disagree with you, Councillor Emsley, I think scrutiny does have teeth. Actually, it has a lot of respect from me as leader and my Cabinet. When their work plan is created, we actually contribute to that with ideas and suggestions, leaving it up to scrutiny to make the final decision. And whenever we are invited, we make sure we turn up and we engage with the process and take recommendations back. To your housing one, whilst I will absolutely double check it, because I think it is worth double checking, I've got a feeling a lot of those recommendations would have been incorporated into the business as usual and then reported via the delivery plan, which goes to Cabinet. It's publicly available and it is in there, but I will definitely check. But that does show a very healthy relationship between the exec and scrutiny and a respect for the work that scrutiny does. And in fact, Councillor Giles, I think actually your example is an example of where scrutiny has worked well. I fully appreciate you made reference to where it hasn't gone far enough and that's the nature of the work that we do. Sometimes it doesn't go far enough. It's not a perfect art. We have to keep working on it and keep, if we really believe it, keep talking about it at the correct forum. And that in this case is scrutiny. But, you know, it is about that friendly challenge, being a critical friend to the administration. We respect all the work that scrutiny has done. I thank Councillor Raza for his stewardship of the scrutiny committee, all the committee, the panel chairs and those that have sat on scrutiny. I can tell you, as Tony Blair once said, I still get that flutter every time I sit in front of scrutiny because actually I do have a lot of respect for what you do. So I commend this report.
Thank you, Councillor Rajua. Yes, Councillor Bitolf.
Thank you. I didn't think I was going to speak, but I would just like to pick up on some points that councillor Giles made, particularly about the detail that gets passed on. We spend a lot of time in the Housing and Environment Panel, meeting outside experts, meeting outside people who are experienced in dealing with the issues and who know things that we don't know. And none of that is translated into the very short summary that is provided in this report and to others. I don't know what happened in discussions between the chairman and officers, but I feel I left with a huge amount of information and that it's gone nowhere and that therefore that was an awful lot of time wasted. I'd like to see longer recommendations sent to a larger group of people so that we can really make an impact on what we've learned and not waste the time. Because it's fascinating, it's extremely enjoyable. Working cross-party is extremely interesting as well and colleagues in the room will, who I've worked with before on scrutiny, we've built very good relationships with each other as a result. But if it doesn't translate into recommendations to officers, it is a waste of our time.
Thank you, Councillor Bitolf. Can I ask Councillor Raza if you'd like to sum up?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I mean, it is very, very challenging last municipal year. And I think councillor Rajua summed it up absolutely perfectly with the challenges that we have. The officers have done an absolutely fantastic job. So I would like to give my absolute heartfelt thanks to all the officers involved in scrutiny. I think they're an absolutely fantastic team. I'd love to see, you know, maybe get a little bit bigger as well. But it's a great team. So I do like to say thank you for those that do the work for all committee members as well and subcommittee as well. And of course, all my councillors as well, on the committee members as well as subcommittee panels as well. So thank you all.
Thank you, Councillor Raza. So can I ask members to note to the report? Thank you. Thank you for your contributions. On to agenda item seven and the appointment of Chief Executive. So item seven is a report about the appointment of the Chief Executive. Can I ask councillor Shantanu Rajua to propose a report?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. A real happy moment, certainly for me. As members will be aware, we have been without a permanent chief exec for a number of months. I'm pleased to bring the recommendation of the Chief Officer Employment Panel to the council. That recommendation is that our interim chief exec be made permanent. So Mandy's going to be appointed to the post. There were four applicants who were shortlisted for the position, two went forward to interview and I can say Mandy was absolutely brilliant at interview and the decision of the panel was absolutely unanimous. We were supported in our decision making not only by officers, but a number of stakeholder panels, both members and society as well. And I thank all that took part in this process. I think we've got a very, very good competent candidate to take the chief exec's position. There is a lot of work to do, but I have absolute faith that Mandy will execute her role brilliantly for all of the council and the prosperity of the Borough. As part of the recommendations, it is also the recommendation that she assumes the acting returning officer or returning officer role as well, which I hope council will also agree. But I'm absolutely delighted that Mandy has been successful and I really look forward to working with her over the months and years ahead. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Rajua. Councillor Bruce to second.
Yes, wholeheartedly second the report and reserve my right to speak.
Thank you very much. As this is not a cabinet or a committee report and has come to the council direct, so we will debate in the usual way. May I remind contributors that they have three minutes if anybody would like to speak? Excellent. In that case. So councillor Rajua, would you like to sum up? In that case, ask members to vote on the three recommendations as put. Can I ask for a show of hands for votes for? Votes against? Or any abstentions? Thank you, then that's carried. Thank you, councillors. And on behalf of us all, may I congratulate Mandy Skinner on her appointment? I know we all look very much forward to continuing to work with her. So next on the agenda, we come to appointments, which is a standing item on our agenda. Now, before we start on this, I've been advised by councillor Jack Emsley that he has a point of order relating to appointments he would like to raise. I'm grateful to him for alerting us of his wish to speak on the matter prior to the meeting. And so I now invite him briefly to explain what his point of order is.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I was going to say I've given advance notice of this point of order, but you have succinctly summarised that for me. This actually relates to membership of committees and concerns section 4.3 of the council's committee procedure, which clearly states that the licensing panel must contain three members of the licensing committee. In a meeting of the licensing panel on the 15th of July, councillor Ranjit Gill presented himself to the meeting as a member of the licensing committee and proceeded to take part in the deliberation process and vote on the application. Councillor Gill was not a member of the licensing committee and by presenting himself as such was in breach of the council's constitution. I'd like to request through you, Madam Mayor, some advice from the monitoring officer to confirm that this was indeed a breach of the constitution, to confirm that councillor Gill's presence at the meeting has in effect rendered the decision taken by the panel invalid and what the consequences of this breach are, given rules around the licensing process and political proportionality.
Thank you, councillor Emsley. As this is about a suspected breach of the constitution, I will invite Benita Edwards, Director of Law and Governance, and the monitoring officer to respond.
First of all, councillor Emsley, thank you for bringing this matter to my attention yesterday. It was really helpful. I can confirm that you are correct in what you say in relation to the provisions of the constitution. So the constitution does provide that the licensing panel shall be comprised of three members who are drawn from the Licensing and General Purposes Committee. I can also confirm that you're correct when you say that the licensing panel convened last week. And at that time, councillor Gill was not actually a member of the panel. So the points you, the points of order you have raised are factually correct. So first of all, I would like to apologise to members of the licensing committee and anyone else who may have been inconvenienced by the events at the licensing panel last week. It has, I have looked into it and there was an officer error. So officers mistakenly assumed that councillor Gill had actually been appointed to the Licensing and General Purposes Committee. And the reason they assumed that was because there were plans afoot, but the decision hadn't actually been taken. So having made that mistake, officers then treated councillor Gill as if he were a member of the licensing panel and able to attend last week. So that is the error that you drew to my attention yesterday and that we looked into. So I have concluded that the meeting last week of the licensing panel wasn't properly convened. It is as if the meeting never took place. And any decisions or any determinations that the licensing panel would have undertaken last week were effectively null and void. Having reached that view, that what the effect of that is, that the application remains with the licensing authority to determine and the licensing authority may convene another panel in due course to consider that application. So once again, I do want to apologise to the licensing committee and to members more generally, as well as to the applicant and any objectors who were interested, who took part in the hearing, because I do appreciate there will have been some inconvenience.
Thank you, Benita, and thank you councillor Emsley for raising that. Yes, councillor Stradt.
Just for clarity, I'd just like, when councillor Emsley made that, I think there was a hint that councillor Gill may have been misrepresenting. Councillor Gill actually was not misrepresenting. He, he was there because he genuinely thought he was a member of that committee.
Thank you, councillor Stradt. I think that was made clear by.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So now we can move on to the actual appointments.
Excuse me. Yes. As there's no rebuttal to a point of order, should that last statement not be struck from the record, from the minutes?
I think, as I say, I think it was made very clear by.
Yeah, so therefore I don't believe the intervention should be recorded in the minutes.
That's fine. Certainly. So may I draw members' attention to the information and nominations in the agenda front pages and also in the supplementary, supplementary agenda pages. For convenience, the latter collects all the information and noting the appointments being processed into one document. That's the single page document that you have. As you will see, there are quite a number of proposals. However, any cabinet changes are only for noting by the council as the decision to make changes there sits purely with the leader. Therefore, I propose that we start by noting the change to the cabinet before moving on to the other proposed appointments. Also, may I clarify that councillor Pritam Gerewell's portfolio is community safety, customer experience and enforcement, as noted earlier. Do members note the change to the cabinet? Do members note the change to the cabinet? Thank you. We now move on to the formal appointments to committees and outside bodies. Members will see a complete list of these in the supplementary agenda. Before we make a decision on these, may I just check to see if there are any additional nominations to be made orally at the meeting? No, I don't see any. Thank you. May I ask members to agree the proposed nominations to committees and outside bodies in the agenda front pages and on the supplementary agenda? Thank you. Now that takes us to agenda item nine. There are no, so ask members to note the report and the report is that there are no items on the emergency arrangements. Good, thank you members. And then on to our motions. So agenda item 10, we are now the part of the agenda devoted to motions. We have three motions to consider this evening. May I remind members that the new council procedure rules, which were recently agreed, allow the proposer to speak for five minutes, but all the other contributors may only speak for three minutes each. We therefore now move on to the first motion, which can be found at agenda item 10. I now therefore invite councillor Tony Lukey to propose the motion. Councillor Lukey.
I will stand. I prefer to sit down, but this is such an important motion. So as cabinet assistant with special responsibility for supporting the fight against fly tipping, I'd like to propose a motion to declare war on waste criminals and their accomplices. When I say accomplices, they're people that kind of encourage fly tipping either directly or indirectly. People who use an unlicensed waste carrier. Landlords of houses of multiple occupation who do not manage properly and allow mattresses, for example, to be dumped. William, Lilium. And also estate agents, letting agents who never advise, as far as I know, and I know a lot of estate agents and letting agents never advise when is the proper waste collection day. Their accomplices. So they're the ones that we should be targeting and we will. Because the council doesn't need to remind anyone that fly tipping blights our streets. It's unsightly, can be dangerous and it wears away our sense of civic pride when people walk past smelly old sacks of refuse or carry bags full of nonsense by litter bins. And they are the, again, they are the product of houses of multiple occupation, them not even licensed. And we work on that too. A lot of this stuff that relates to fly tipping goes hands in hands with some of our nascent and developing HMO licensing policies. So I'm proud to live in the London Borough of Hounslow. I've lived here for more than half my life. I turned up in about 1983, although I used to come here as a kid during the holidays. And there wasn't any fly tipping back in 1963 in Chiswick when I used to stay with my grandmother above the bakery at number 14 Chiswick High Road. But we do know that when it does happen, it's a small minority of individuals disrespecting the places we call home and it's important that we stamp it out. That's why this motion, this is what this motion is all about. It resolves to recognize the good work already being done by Hounslow Highways and our partners and the council's special waste service team. Almost, is the acronym SWAT? No, not SWAST. But the, and we need to expand that. Finances and resources don't always allow that. It welcomes tough new fines imposed on ignorant waste criminals, but it resolves to do more than to publicize our successes in bringing fly tippers to justice and making their consequences clear for those who disrespect our communities. Fly tipping is a great challenge. It's a war of attrition between the number of incidents that occur and our capacity to respond to them. And we do, by and large, respond to them. But one of the things I looked at today was the nonsense that goes on outside number one Lampton Road, often report that when I'm in this part of town. It's important to provide some context here. Last year alone, Hounslow Highways responded to 23,543 incidents of fly tipping. That's out of a total number of reports to fix my street of around 40,000. So that's a predominant, that's a predominant subject of reports. Hounslow Highways are contractually obliged to respond to incidents within 24 hours, although the contract does not apply to private land and the disposal of hazardous waste can take longer. We do have a good neighbourhood enforcement team that does collect the, that does enforce on private land. We'll put some, we'll put some information out on that later, but they are excellent. This administration also delivered on its pledge to introduce a special waste service, a dedicated team who use Fix My Street data to patrol fly tipping. It's improving. It's improving in the town centres. It's improving in parts of Heston, for example. But we still need to, we've still got more to do there. We know that.
Councillor Lukey, you've got just under a minute.
I better speed it up then, don't I? Last year, the council issued 2,381 fixed penalty notices. Three months ago, our administration also took the decision to raise fly tipping fines to the legal maximum of £1,000, sending a clear, yeah, good, isn't it? Sending a clear message to would be waste criminals. Problem is not with those who have the unenviable job of picking it up. The problem is not with enforcement. This administration has taken some real bold action on this issue. Motion resolve, this motion resolves to address those people directly with a very simple message. If you fly tip in our borough, you will pick up a £1,000 fine. It costs nothing to take pride in the places we call home. I propose that. I think we've got a second there.
Thank you councillor Lukey.
Thank you, mayor.
Can I ask councillor, can I ask councillor Lal to second?
Madam mayor, I happily second that motion and I reserve my right to speak.
Thank you. Can I ask anybody else if they wish to speak on this motion? Can I take councillor Chowdhury first?
Thank you, madam mayor, for the opportunity to speak on this motion. So earlier today, rather timely actually, a resident contacted me about placement of CCTV in the borough, particularly in my ward in Austin Spring Grove, to tackle fly tipping. So it's been placed there as a deterrent and also to try and catch the, as you call them, criminals in the act so that fines can be issued. We've got another council camera in another part of the ward and this is where it's proven very successful and we've been able to identify perpetrators and have issued fines. As you mentioned councillor Lukey, the message is simple. If you fly tip in Hounslow, you will be fined £1,000. It's why we've raised it to legal maximum and why we welcome the new powers from central government and why we're working with our police partners to stamp it out. But this is only part of the solution. As you mentioned, Tony, as well, it doesn't cost anything to respect our community. It's free. So to really see that change, we need to talk about civic pride. Recently, when I was reporting a fly tip near my daughter's nursery, I heard a young child point to that and say, that's a sad choice. And if they knew that, why can't we know that as adults? Why can't we do better? As a 13-year-old, I visited Germany. I was lucky enough to go with my school on a German exchange trip and I spent some time with my German exchange partner and her mum, who happened to be involved in politics. And something I noticed is that in the neighbourhoods there, they take a lot of pride in their streets. They look after it. And I thought, as a 13-year-old, why can't we do that in Hounslow? What can we do to make Hounslow better? Of course, I'm not saying we need to have more sanctions, but to really have an impact, we need to change our own behaviours. We need to do better. And this is a vision that I share with my fellow councillors, but also with my fellow residents. In Austin Spring Grove, we've got lots of WhatsApp groups where residents regularly talk about fly tipping hotspots and they get them solved. They use Fix My Street, the staff come along, they pick it up and it's gone. And we can do that too. So everyone, let's make it our mission to have pride in our local area. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Chowdhury. Councillor Lambert.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor. Yes, I really welcome this initiative. I welcome that it's done by Tony Lukey, who has always been a great, powerful soldier against mess. I'm going to sit down because it's too difficult for me to do this. The question or the, the observation I want to make is, I think it was five, four or five years ago, we did this before and we, I remember going down Kingsley Road and finding about 200 bags and going through all of them, not me, but I went through some of them and officers went through the others. As a result of which, we decided to start something called the special waste service. And the special waste service was started, it had five officers. And it was particularly focused first off on Kingsley Road. If I go to Kingsley Road now, there isn't any fly tipping. Most times when I go down, there isn't any or maybe there's one or two. And I go to Kingsley Road quite often because I'm proud of it. In the manifesto upon which we were elected three years ago, there is a commitment in there to extend the special waste service across the whole borough. I don't think we've done that. And so my question is, are we going to do it and what resource are we going to allocate to make this happen? CCTV is fine, but seven or eight years ago, we tried using CCTV. We put it on YouTube, which did all sorts of things. We never got anybody. We got a lot of nice pictures of people that nobody recognized. But I'm not saying it's always like that. But Barking were the first people who did that. They abandoned it as well because it's not effective. So the effective thing is people who are specialists going through bags, talking to residents. Channel Close is another one I remember where we, where we had a strong engagement. And that is the way that you get rid of fly tipping. You have enforcement that is based on information. CCTV is fine, but it doesn't really help. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Lambert. Councillor Bidoff.
Madam mayor, thank you. A few years ago, Chiswick Gunnersbury Ward hosted the borough's second worst fly tip. Despite short-term improvements, that spot is regaining that reputation because the council isn't tackling the causes of fly tipping. I too commend the special waste service and Solidad, whose enthusiasm, hard work and pragmatism cannot be praised too highly, but she is chasing her tail because policies fail to tackle the causes of fly tipping. The collections team returns with dedication to the same corners and alleys day after day to remove another dump because the council won't tackle the causes of fly tipping. Yet again, the council is looking at the symptoms, the fly tips, not the causes. Why people fly tip? What are the causes? Well, here are six. The closure of Sterling Road Centre on the edge of Chiswick. A lack of knowledge of the bulky waste service amongst landlords and their tenants. It's not just estate agents. The costs of that bulky waste service. No space in tiny homes to hang on to stuff as instructed on the website and without cars to drive it to Mortlake or Spaceway. Living in an increasingly grubby borough dominated by weeds, unswept leaves, litter, graffiti and waste sacks on pavements and a consequential loss of civic pride. You've got that right because there is no reciprocity with the council and its increasing requests to residents to do the weeding, sweep up the leaves, litter pick while paying more in council tax every year. Meanwhile, residents have ideas and I do hope the council will listen to them rather than believe it knows better. A couple of weeks ago, councillor Ron Ruschiso and I visited Flats Above Shops, whose note's very specific, at Prince's Avenue. They are the ones who walk up and down the stairs to their front doors past filthy fly tips every day. They soon will again be, that soon will again be the borough's second worst fly tip. They told us they wanted to recycle so the waste bins don't overflow. More bins, let's face it, if there were more bins, even fly tippers might use them. More frequent collections, an easy one this. If a bin is empty, it can be filled. If it is full, it's a fly tip attraction. A regular big skip. We have suggested this before because we know it works. They can dump their things in a skip on a set day and that will help fly tipping. The bulky waste service price per item, not up to five items. This was a housing and environment scrutiny panel recommendation in 2020. Residents do not have the space to hang on to their stuff, they want to get rid of it. Madam mayor, this motion offers a few catchphrases. War on waste, leading the charge, address behavioural challenges, bring back pride, with no actual policies to tackle the causes of fly tipping. It's impossible to support this chimera.
Thank you councillor Bidoff. Councillor Sharma.
Thank you, madam mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, residents watching from home and fellow councillors, tonight's debate has shown just how deeply we all care about restoring pride in our communities. The passion in the chamber reflects the frustration we hear from our residents every day and the shared determination to act. It's clear that this administration is taking the issues seriously. As councillor Lukey rightly pointed out, this is not just a logistical problem, it's a behavioural one. Tackling it requires more than just resources, it requires resolve. That's why this administration has invested in the special waste service to help crack down waste offenders. And by raising fines to the legal maximum, we are sending a clear uncompromising message. This behaviour will not be tolerated. But we are going further. Last April, cabinet approved phase one of our new enforcement review. This is a direct response to the concerns we hear week in, week out as councillors from residents tired of fly tipping, tired of littering and of antisocial behaviour. The review will make enforcement more visible, more effective and more responsive to local needs. We're backing this with £253,000 investment for phase one, an investment that will also help deliver £200,000 in annual savings. That's not just tough on crime, that's value for money, reflecting this administration's focus on providing value for money. The new target operating model being introduced will be preventative, proactive and cost effective, designed to prevent problems before they occur. We must do more to educate residents about the consequences of littering and illegal dumping, not just the penalties, but the damage it does to our shared spaces. And I wholeheartedly support councillor Chowdhury's reminder of what's at stake, our pride, because pride matters and pride, civic pride in Hounslow matters. We should all be proud of where we live. Every piece of litter, every act of disrespect is a wound to our civic pride, but it should also strengthen our resolve. So tonight, I urge you all actually to let's stand together to declare a war on the waste criminals. Let's restore pride to every street, every park and every corner of our borough. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Sharma. Councillor Lal.
Thank you, madam mayor. Earlier on, I seconded this motion and I want to have my opportunity to speak to it. Will do. So I'll start with the fact that this motion at its heart, this is about more than enforcement. It's about changing behaviours and restoring pride in our borough. And I think fellow councillors have already iterated that already. Fly tipping is not just nice or it's a deliberate act of disregard for our community. It damages our environment, creates hazards for families and children and costs the taxpayer £2 million last year alone. We all know the hotspots in our ward. Every councillor here can name the alleys, the corners and the open spaces that hit again with dumping. And our residents know them too and they rightly demand action. So we need 100% of our residents to know that if you dump waste illegally on our streets, we will find you and we will fine you up to £1,000. That's why it's important to publicize successful actions that are taken against fly tippers. Not to make the council look good, not to make council officers or Hounslow Highways look good, not even to make us councillors look good, but to act as a warning to the criminals. We need to publicize the work we are doing in order to deter the fly tipping criminals. We need to publicise the work we are doing in order to deter the fly tipping criminals. By doing so, we will help to reassure residents that this is a challenge we are facing together. And the councillor Lukey's already mentioned in his intro and also the motion that's before you, the data that supports the work that we're doing to date and the number of fixed penalty notices that have been issued. But colleagues, let's be clear, enforcement alone will not solve this. There is a deeper challenge, the mindset of some individuals who believe dumping rubbish or dropping litter is acceptable. It is not. We need behavioural change. We need to create a culture where people take pride in their streets and understand that personal responsibility matters. We can learn from our communities. Groups like the Heston Action Group and the Cranford Action Group show what pride looks like. Month after month, they organise clean-ups, report offenders and they lead by example in our communities. That is the spirit we need to encourage borough-wide. This is why this motion matters. It's not about politics, it's about pride, safety and shared responsibility. So let's send a clear message today, as councillor Lukey said. Declare war on waste criminals, keep fines at the maximum level, promote civic pride and publicise our enforcement successes. And most importantly, change the mindset that says littering and fly tipping are acceptable.
Thank you, councillor Lau.
Madam Mayor. I haven't finished. I haven't finished.
You've got five seconds, councillor Lau.
Okay, all right. So here's the final paragraph. So as a council and as a borough, we should present a united front. That's why I'm calling on all members to join in our fight against waste criminals by voting for this motion. No matter the colour of your rosette, no matter what part of the borough you represent, we're all working together to restore pride in our communities. That starts by demanding respect. Please support the motion.
Thank you, councillor Lau.
Madam Mayor, we've had some excellent speeches on this, but there's a lot more to get through. Can I say that the question now be put?
I'm going to take one more from here. So it's up to you, which one of you wants to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, councillor Giles, for allowing me to speak or for conceding your place. I really like the sentiment of the motion. But I do have to struggle with some of the resolutions. We want bold action, yes we do. But what resolutions? We're going to declare war on waste criminals. I don't know about you, but when I think of declaring war on something, I automatically go to the war on drugs, the war on terror. And we all know how successful those initiatives have been. It does feel that this is a little bit of a PR perspective. Tonight in the debate, we've had some fantastic comments about what the council is actually doing, the money that's already put in. Why is none of that in this motion? It would make it so much more supportable. We would be able to support it. But I read this and I go, we're going to declare war, we're going to recognise the work, we're going to raise awareness, we're going to publicise successful investigations and we're going to bring back pride. But how? At what cost? Within what timeframe? By prioritising fly tipping, what will get missed or deprioritised in order to justify this? It talks about the work that Hounslow Highways is doing. And what does it mean that we prioritise this over potential resurfacing of streets? Street light dimming, you know, I'd like to understand. I think if we look at the root causes of this behavioural change, I got an email today from a resident who was talking about how she'd struggled to get a bin, a larger bin. And she said, "I must ask, why is the process for acquiring a slightly larger bin so labyrinthine? From the outsider, it appears that your larger bin policy may have been drafted by someone battling a severe case of administrative ennui. If the council is genuinely committed, I would strongly recommend a review of our internal processes. The current system is not fit for purpose and a four-month SLA for such a minor request does not inspire confidence in local governance. To be clear, I'm not asking for gold-plated waste management. I'm asking for a slightly larger plastic bucket or alternatively a weekly collection with the current one. As councillor Bedof has already stated, many of these changes are behavioural but cannot be achievable because of the current constraints. And by changing some of those deliverables, we could potentially have something that would be a lot more votable and supportable. Thank you very much."
Thank you, councillor Giles. So I'm happy to put the vote now unless councillor Lukey wants to sum up briefly.
I do want to sum up.
Briefly?
Yeah, well, briefly. Look, I'm not going to go into how long it takes to replace a bin. I know it can take less than that time. I don't know what happens in Chiswick. I do know what happens in Chiswick because I have family there. Councillor Bedof, I'll come down to Prince's Avenue with you, come and have a look, not a problem. A lot of these things, I think some of this is not just educating residents, but it's also educating councillors. Know what you can do, know what you... And I'm not aiming, sorry, I'm looking at you, but I'm not aiming at you. There's a load of people behind me. There's a lot of people behind me. Yeah, there's a lot of people behind me. So everybody's got to take part in this and we can find ways. I think the number of reports across the wards, the highest is Osslyn Spring Grove Ward. Because we know, we know in Osslyn Spring Grove Ward, it is the biggest ward, it is the cleanest ward compared to many others. And the second one is Hounslow Central Ward where the lead member councillor Shivraj Garrawal is involved. So I know we can poo-poo wars on, but we can also take part in these. Even if it's as kind of, and I am aiming at a couple of you over there, a dad's army type thing, I would suggest. And Private Pike. So I would just recommend, I would just recommend, yeah, and Mrs Fox. And I will recommend you support this motion wherever you come from. If you can't bear to support it, just abstain because I'm with you. I'm with you in W4 and a bit of W3 as well.
Thank you, councillor Lukey. So in that case, can we move to the vote? So firstly, can I see all in favour of the recommendations? Can I see all opposed to the recommendations? It's listed in the motion. And any abstentions? Thank you. Then the motion is carried. On to agenda, item 11. We therefore move now to the second motion. I therefore invite councillor Anjik Gill to propose the motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak today on an issue that sits at the heart of our commitment for fairness, opportunity and wellbeing of every child, free school meals. We know that when a child is hungry, they cannot learn, thrive or reach their full potential. And Madam Mayor, you might want to know why I know that, because I was one of those as a child. So this is quite emotional for me because as I grew up, I also had free school meals. So that is why I welcome the recent extension of free school meals policy introduced by the government. This is a bold and compassionate step, one that recognises cost of living pressures facing families across the country and puts children's health, education at the centre of public policy. This motion celebrates the extension of free school meals to every single child or student up to year 11 from a family in receipt of universal credit. In the two parliamentary constituencies in our borough, there are about 15,450 children who are eligible with an additional 3,680 in Hammersmith and Chiswick. We are lucky that in London, the mayor provides free school meals to all primary school age pupils. I'm delighted to see the government roll out the first 750 school breakfast clubs across the country with Marlborough Primary, which is in Isleworth, and Cavendish Primary in Chiswick, both are included. The expansion of free school meals means more children will be guaranteed at least one hot meal, a nutritious meal a day regardless of their background. And that, of course, was applicable to me as a child. That is a powerful statement about the kind of society that we want to build, where no child is left behind simply because of financial hardship. However, introducing a policy is only the beginning. The real challenge lies in its implementation and in ensuring that every child eligible for school meals is actually receiving them. We must do more to increase the uptake and the means of removing barriers, stigma, lack of awareness and administrative hurdles and still prevent some families from applying. We can take action on several fronts, namely improve awareness, streamline the application process, tackle stigma, engage in communities. And I'll go on to improve awareness. Many families simply do not know that their children are eligible, which is a shame, which everybody should be aware of this. Schools, councils can work together to provide clear, accessible information through letters, school websites, community centres and translated materials where necessary. To streamline the application process, I think bureaucracy can be daunting. We should make enrolment automatic, seamless as possible, particularly for those on universal credit and other qualifying benefits. To tackle stigma, no child should feel embarrassed about receiving a free school meal, just like I was. I was never embarrassed because for me, it was a joy to have a meal. Universal provision in early years in primary schools is a good start. But we must work with schools, normalise free meals and ensure no child is singled out. I was never singled out. I was happy to be there. Engage communities. We can work with parents, school governors and local voluntary organisations to help identify and support families who may be falling through the cracks. This is not just about food, it's about dignity. Opportunity and giving every child the foundation they deserve. I think everybody deserves that. In the weeks and months ahead, let us ensure we don't just deliver a policy, but we deliver on its promise. So I propose this motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Gill. Can I invite councillor Ajmer Garywell to second the motion, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I second the motion and reserve my right to speak.
Thank you. I can open the floor to debate. Councillor Assim?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I rise in support of this motion today because no child in our borough should be expected to learn on an empty stomach. And hunger should never be a barrier to education or opportunity. Backing this motion means backing the future of our children. But this motion isn't just about food or policy. It's about dignity, it's about fairness and it's about giving every child in our borough the chance to thrive. The government's expansion of free school meals to all children on universal credit is a vital step forward. It will help lift 100,000 children out of poverty and save families up to £495 per child per year. Here in Hounslow, a staggering 32% of our children live below the poverty line. In Feltham West Ward, the ward which I represent, over 774 children grow up in income deprived households. These are not just statistics, they are a moral mandate to act. And this is where national ambition must translate to real local delivery. The impact of this motion doesn't just stop at home, it extends into the classroom too. Because when children are fed, they learn better, focus longer, behave more positively and are more likely to succeed academically. This isn't just support for households in need, it's an investment in our schools, to our teachers and our borough's future. Madam Mayor, I've spoken to several local parents who've shared some heartbreaking truth, that sometimes it's the school meal that gets them through the week and without it, they skip their own meal. No parent should ever be forced to make that kind of sacrifice. I'm proud that this council has already taken important steps with the introduction of breakfast clubs, holiday food support programmes, community hubs like the ones at Meadowbank and targeted investment in our most disadvantaged neighbourhoods. But now we must go further and by supporting this motion, we can help ensure that every eligible child receives their meal, parents are supported and schools and family hubs have the tools to reach those who need it most. Madam Mayor, today the message is clear that this council remains committed to fairness, dignity and equal opportunity for all. And under this administration in Hounslow, working alongside central government, no child goes hungry, no family is forgotten and every pupil gets a chance to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Assim. Councillor McGregor?
Well, that was a very interesting comment. 32% of your ward is 2-0 in below the poverty line. You seem to forget that in the 60 years since this council was started, the Labour Party's been in charge for 54. Have you just woken up to this? What have you been doing the last 54 years? Come on, get real. Start thinking appropriately. You've had Labour governments in the past at the same time as you've had a Labour administration here and you've failed completely to deal with child poverty. And the fact is, it's not 32% across the board. The latest figure shows close to 40% of people are actually living in poverty. And why? And the answer is because quite simply, we haven't had the right council in the right place over that time. And quite simply, these are crocodile tears of every kind. They are crocodile tears. Because quite simply, quite simply, you are making a gesture. That's all it is. The reality is, you'll still have poverty because you are the Labour Party.
Oh, sorry. Councillor McGregor, I'm not sure that actually addressed the motion. So can I... Councillor Butt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening. I welcome this motion to tackle child poverty through the extension of free school meals. It represents a clear change in direction from the terrible years of austerity. Just last month, we heard the announcement of new Best Start family hubs backed by £500 million in government funding to provide support, care and advice for young families. Madam Mayor, I welcome the government's announcement of new Best Start community hubs as well as the legacy of Short Start at its peak. Short Start Centre helped provide early year support for the families of young children. Children who lived within a short distance of Short Start Centre for their first five years performed 0.8 grades better in their GCSEs. And the IFS has calculated that for every one pound the government spent on Short Start, there were benefits to attending children worth £1.09 solely through school outcomes. Madam Mayor, this is the kind of holistic approach that councillor Garrawal has described by investing in supporting children at a young age, whether by providing free school meals or investing in community hubs. We can help build a brighter, long-term future for our children. Austerity does not work. It had a catastrophic impact on our young people. Today, we are helping to reverse that. It is clear from this debate that government and the council are united in their mission to tackle child poverty at an early age and to remove the barriers to opportunity. Madam Mayor, I support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Butt. Councillor Emzey?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. And this is a really critical issue. I'm glad that it is here in this council. And respectfully though, there are three problems with this. And respectfully though, there are three problems with this motion. And the first is that the numbers don't add up. The Institute for Fiscal Studies states that the government's free school meals policy will quote "not see anything like 100,000 children lifted out of poverty" next year. That's what the IFS says. They say that it will benefit considerably fewer pupils than the policy implemented by the previous government in 2018. And councillor Gill talked about auto-enrollment. I agree, exceptionally important. It's not delivered by this government policy though. The second flaw in this motion is that the government isn't actually properly funding this policy. Analysis showed that the government is announcing, to go along with this policy, a funding increase per meal of £3. £3 per meal. Now, the NAHT union said this would leave many schools having to subsidise free school meals out of their own budgets. The ASCL union said that if this policy is going to be done on the cheap, then its impact will be greatly diminished. Now, councillor Gill, I know that you're the only Labour councillor who's not a member of a trade union, but the rest of you have to listen to that and think there must be something wrong with the implementation of this policy. And Madam Mayor, the third flaw in this motion is that it talks about access to nutritious meals. It's absolutely right to do so. It's a critical part of a free school meal. But the LACA, the largest caterers association in this country, stated that the inadequate and insulting levels of funding for free school meals by this government will mean many smaller portion sizes and lower quality ingredients for the meals being provided to pupils. This motion supports a policy which is nowhere near as effective as claimed, isn't properly funded and will lead to lower quality meals for pupils. Labour might say that's good enough for pupils in our borough. We don't think so.
Thank you, councillor Emsley. Councillor Ajmer Garrywell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm quite shocked, actually. I have to say, while Labour administration are doing something with the Labour government, we never had any ideas or help or anything from the Tory government while they were there. Whether they were small portions or large portions, there was nothing coming. At least they'll have something now. So I must say that free school meals are so important and as a council, we must resolve to join the government in this mission to throw off the oppressive weight of child poverty that weighs down our young people's potential and acts like a fetter on their futures. We must resolve to encourage the uptake of these free school meals, which could save families up to £500 a year. But the mission to remove barriers to opportunity requires a holistic approach. It requires support at every level. That's why, along with the extension of free school meals, we must continue doing what we can as a local authority to eradicate inequality in our borough. One pillar of support is to help create equality by place. We all know that there is inequality from one part of our borough to the next. Sometimes you just have to cross the street to see it. That's why we created 30 equal opportunity areas to span from Chiswick in the east to Bedford in the west. Our mission in this area include raising employment and average income, raising education skills and training, improving health and wellbeing, improving community safety, housing and living environment. Each of these four missions help us to fight child poverty because by raising income and education, by investing in skills and by improving health outcomes, we help lift the barriers to opportunity. So far, we have helped 502 people achieve qualifications. We installed air quality monitors to measure the health of our most deprived residents. We have invested in 30 local community projects within the Equality Opportunity Areas. We've introduced a fortnightly drop-in services at Meadowbank Centre which offer one-to-one carer's advice, support with CV writing and job matching workshops. We are planning to expand Cranford College on weekends to increase that support. All this makes a huge difference to local families and lifts the burden for struggling parents. I welcome the government's announcement of an extension to free school meals. Alongside the work we are already doing as a council to tackle inequality, I'm sure that together we will make real progress. And that is why I ask you all tonight to join in our mission to end child poverty, to remove the barriers to opportunity and to make life that little bit easier for struggling parents. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Garrawell. Councillor Giles, I know you put your hand up, but I'm going to take councillor Dennison, mindful of time and... Councillor Dennison.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Randi, you're absolutely right. There is nothing more sensible than putting food into the mouths of children who cannot afford to eat. It is a bedrock policy that has long been waited for in terms of its extension. And I wholeheartedly welcome the extension that is being proposed. But to be clear, Jack is also right. This policy by national government is underfunded and it will cause difficulties in every single school in this borough. And the other thing that this motion is based on, and I'll vote for it because I will always vote for free school meals, but Jack is completely correct in terms of the dangers of implementing a half-baked policy. And I'm going to warn you against what seems to be the theme of this evening, which is that because of the proximity of maybe the by-election or next year's election, people are going for clickbait in terms of what they are wanting to be known for. And you're putting forward stuff that is palpably good but underwhelming. And in this particular case, this is using other people's initiatives, other people's money to do something that should always have been done. And I welcome it. But I also remember that this Labour council twice has cut council tax reduction scheme funding for the poorest families in this borough. So you'll put food into the mouths of children, but you'll take money out of the pocket of poorer families. And these two things cannot be just done and treated as if this is a miracle at work. It doesn't. You can't do both of those things and expect to tackle child poverty and family poverty in this borough. And that is why there are such shocking numbers of families in this borough that are poor and finding it hard to get by. And when they see the Labour Party claiming wonderful things and the Tory party for some strange reason not actually at least agreeing that it would be good to have these things done, they think that politicians do not understand what is going on in their lives and don't care about them at heart. And if you really did care about them at heart, you wouldn't just be passing a motion like this. You'd also be rethinking what you have done consistently over a number of years, which is to cut support to poorer families in this borough. They may not be great voters, but it's not a question of whether they vote for you or not. It's a question of whether they can have the opportunities that they deserve from a well-led council. And at the moment, you may say that is what you are, but that is not what you are actually delivering.
Thank you, councillor Dennison. Can I now ask councillor Gill to sum up, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Firstly, I would like to thank everyone who spoke in favour of this motion. And I'm really surprised to hear Mr Emsley say that any meal is better than no meal. I mean, you didn't say, you said, "No meal", "Any meal is not as good as having a meal", whatever. Anyway, as a child, but everybody's entitled to a meal. I mean, yes, but whether it is... Any sort of meal is better than nothing, you know? I mean, just because you grew up and you had everything...
Can we...
Point of all, Madam Mayor, what relevance does this have?
Councillor Emsley, can I ask you both to let councillor Gill sum up? And councillor Gill, can I ask you to please sum up and not have a dialogue with councillor Emsley?
I just wanted to say that as a recipient of free meals, I think this is a really good idea and we should really support it. And those who do not support it, well, they've had it free forever. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gill. Can I now move to the vote, please?
Madam Mayor, I think I'd like to call for a named vote on this because I mean, the Tories are doing their normal. So let's see them out in public if they're supporting free school meals and child opportunity.
So I need eight members to support. Okay, okay, a named vote it is then. So now Jake's going to read out the names alphabetically and if anybody can just answer either for if you support the motion, against if you don't support the motion or abstain if you're abstaining from the motion. Thank you.
Councillor Ahmed. Councillor Akram.
For.
Councillor Assim.
For.
Councillor Atwal here. Councillor Bath.
For.
Councillor Barty.
For.
Councillor Bidolf.
Against this bad motion.
Councillor Bowring.
For this fantastic motion.
Councillor Bruce.
Can I ask members just if for, against or abstain, please?
Councillor Butt.
For.
Councillor Samia Chowdhury.
For.
Councillor Unser Chowdhury. Oh, sorry. Councillor Chopra.
For.
Councillor Croft.
For.
Councillor Dennison. Councillor Emsley. Councillor Farmanh.
For.
Councillor Foot.
For.
Councillor Giles.
It's not costed, so against.
Councillor Gill. Councillor Ajmer Garrywell.
For.
Councillor Pratam Garrywell.
For.
Councillor Shivraj is not here. Councillor Vikram Garrywell. Councillor Gull. Councillor Gura.
For.
Councillor Cameron. Councillor Keaney.
For.
Councillor Lal.
For.
Councillor Lambert.
For.
Councillor Lukey. Councillor Malik.
For.
Councillor Mann. Councillor McGregor.
Against.
Councillor Mia.
For.
Councillor Mir. Councillor Mitchell.
For.
Councillor Mosley. Councillor Rajwat.
For.
Councillor Raza. Councillor Shaheen. Councillor Marina Sharma.
For.
Councillor Jagdish Sharma. Councillor Emma Sidhu. Councillor Ragwinder Sidhu.
For.
Councillor Siddiqui. Councillor Smith.
For.
Councillor Stroud Terp. Councillor Tack.
For.
Councillor Tariq.
For.
Councillor Thompson's not here. Councillor Todd. Councillor Umair. Councillor Yates.
Thank you. So the motion is carried and thank you for all members for your contribution. So we now turn to agenda item 12. Sorry. I now invite councillor Salmon Shaheen to propose the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Now, some years ago, and many of you were involved in this fantastic effort. Some years ago, we as a borough first bid and were shortlisted for London Borough of Culture. It was a tremendous moment that brought so many of our communities together in celebration of the diverse cultures that we have right here in Hounslow and all the amazing things that we have on our doorstep. Now, of course, we weren't successful, but we weren't going to let all of that creativity, that passion, that energy fizzle out into the ether. And so we ploughed it into something new. And that new thing was the very first Summer of Culture. Today, in this summer 2025, we are celebrating the fourth of those Summer of Cultures and it's grown to 150,000 people coming to events across 50 venues across the borough, uniting our diverse cultures and communities and really putting Hounslow on the map. And I do think that that is something to celebrate and that's one of the things that this motion seeks to achieve, to celebrate that legacy and the importance of culture and also to cement it at the heart of our wider plans for the regeneration of the borough. Now, it also recognises as part of that the funding that we give to organisations and initiatives and art centres from the Golden Mile Centenary to the Creative Mile as well. And it also recognises our support for the creative industries more broadly, including the 3,000 new jobs in the greatest ward in the borough, in Gillette Corner and Gillette Film Studios that are under construction at the moment. All of this is underpinned by our 10-year culture strategy, which is currently in development and I really do look forward to coming to you with that in due course. We've been out for consultation. We've been out to producers and consumers of culture, to residents and also to various different groups across the borough. I really look forward to coming forward with that 10-year culture strategy. But that 10-year culture strategy, we've got to recognise the road. This is the beginning of the road and the end point of that road. What I want to commit us to in this motion is for Hounslow to once again bid and this time win London Borough of Culture.
Thank you, councillor Shaheen. Can I ask councillor Smith to second, please?
I second and reserve my right to speak.
Thank you, councillor Smith. Now open the floor to debate. Councillor Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As councillor Shaheen has suggested, Hounslow is a rich and diverse borough from Chiswick in the east to Feltham in the west and I think we'll agree every stop in between. So that's your one as well, Tony. We have strong communities, all proud of the part they play in their towns. And as a result, the sum of our cultural parts is most impressive. I believe that where there is freedom of expression linked to imagination, we have culture and we have it in abundance here. When we think of culture and entertainment, we may think of plays in the West End, concert halls on the South Bank, but closer to home, we have through our own dedicated arts groups, a remarkable array of performance opportunities, many of which abound in the western end of the borough, which I'm proud to represent. Councillor Shaheen mentioned Feltham Arts, whose aim is to broaden community participation and celebrate culture with a suite of activities aimed at all ages. And most recently, they've done juggling, stilt walking, arts and crafts and more broadly theatre projects. The Feltham Festival runs every May to June. We have the Station Gallery and they also support us with a wonderful music. Members may wish to note that at the end of July, we have the Dragon Wagon coming to the Piazza in Feltham Town Centre, which is a great tale for all the children and all the family about a dragon that doesn't exist or perhaps it does, featuring actors, puppets, original music and songs. But for me, the most telling example I've seen of rich culture in our end of the borough is the Tale Be Told Theatre Company. They take the local history and the characters who really lived in our borough, local theatre, and they take their stories, often through verbatim, first-hand accounts from the past and the present, and reproduce them in performance. Often with the help of youth groups like the Tale Be Told Youth Theatre, which is a really friendly, welcoming group without formal audition, who aims... who aims to bring the best out of our young people, helping them find their authentic selves in drama games, improv devising, meeting at the Bedfont Lane Community Centre during time and time. I've seen our young performers work with Tale Be Told to create performances like Put On Hold, a very moving verbatim piece using residents' accounts of living in temporary accommodation. Now, some, some members who are old enough may remember Mark Savage, who's a friend of mine, an actor. He played Gripper Stebsen, the bully in Grange Hill in the 80s. He sat next to me during that performance. He was moved. He said it was one of the best things he'd seen. All About Us was a joint venture with Feltham Arts, exploring the stories of prominent local people, tying our past with our future. And Three Pinners and a Goldfish performed to over 1,000 local schoolchildren. Incredible. But what I really enjoyed was Women in War, performed on the steps of Hanworth Park House with young members of that theatre group portraying local women, telling their stories, untold stories of their wartime experience in Feltham. Wow. And to see that brought to life, that's rich culture. But every bit as valid.
Councillor Mitchell, you're running out of time.
Okay, of our performing arts culture are those projects which promote the welfare of our young people, such as Rise and Thrive and Perfectly Imperfect, working in the west of the borough. They foster positive relationships among young people who have often had the toughest experiences in life. And through their sessions, be they creative, sporting or outward bound, allow amplification of those same voices, developing confidence, character and resilience and a sense of belonging and empowerment, sharing their culture as part of the borough-wide whole. Hounslow is truly blessed and it's overdue recognition, as councillor Shaheen has said. So let's do it. I wholeheartedly support this, this, this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mitchell. Councillor Emsley?
Yes, thank you very much, madam mayor. It's always tough to follow such a seasoned performer when it comes to, when it comes to culture. There is so much amazing culture in this borough. There is one slight issue with this motion though, and that is the mention it makes to the world-class art centre that we're waiting for in Brentford. And last year, councillor Shaheen told us that there would be spades in the ground at the old police station by spring 2025 to build that new art centre. Well, spring came, spring went, no spades. He then said it would actually be summer 2025. Well, I checked this morning, I didn't see any spades in the ground. There's a few weeks left, to be fair, so it may still come. But we did hear from councillor Yates at the Brentford Area Forum that there may be a planning application at some point in the next few weeks. Well, that doesn't inspire much confidence that we'll see spades in the ground before the end of August. In fact, despite promise after promise, there is actually no clear timeline on this new art centre in Brentford. The whole saga of Watermans and the old police station, which has been derelict for years and years and years, shows you can't really trust a word that we're being told on culture in this borough by this administration. Madam mayor, this is a textbook case of promising something last year and failing to deliver on it. They kicked councillor Lambert out for warning this would happen. And it has transpired that there are no spades in the ground this year. And now with this motion, they're sticking two fingers up at residents in Brentford who are still waiting for their brand new art centre that was promised to them time and time and time again. Labour may think that's an appropriate way to treat residents. We don't.
Thank you, councillor Emsley. Councillor Chopra.
Hello. Thank you, madam mayor, for allowing me to speak. I'd like to thank the lead member for bringing this motion. As he has said, the summer of culture is a fantastic way to promote arts and culture to residents and visitors across the borough, allowing the diverse groups that make up our varied population to celebrate and learn more about the diversity the London Borough of Hounslow has within it. That is why the council want to put culture at the heart of growth and regeneration. The summer of culture benefits our communities, allowing residents to understand the different cultures in their neighbourhoods and gives them a chance to learn more about other cultures, traditions, food and way of life. All of these positive aspects help to counter the false negative impression that is being spread on social media, that Hounslow is not an attractive place to visit. Millions of pounds are being invested in our creative industries and a large number of people are choosing to live in our borough because of the brilliant parks, festivals, art studios, providing inclusive, diversive and artistic events. The changes showcased by the summer's Great West Road Centenary GM100 celebrations highlight how parts of our borough have made the successful transition from an industrial past to a creative future, from cars to culture, from factories to film. The summer of culture gives people from outside the borough a positive reason to visit Brentford, Chiswick, Feltham, Hounslow and other wonderful areas we have in our borough. I've enjoyed the numerous events organised by the Watermans Art Group that have taken place at Bell Square, such as the Anhad Festival of South Asian Culture. I'm looking forward to further events at this great central location. There are also many events showcasing the diverse nature of Hounslow Borough, hosted by the wonderful historic houses, museums that we are so lucky to have. I'm particularly excited by the prospect of an improved and permanent art centre in Hounslow that will be created as part of the Hounslow regeneration of the Old Treaty Centre. The Hounslow Art Centre performs many great cultural events, such as pantomime, social wellbeing classes that bring people together. This summer, they will also stage outdoor plays and theatres at Boston Manor House, some of which I hope to be attending. I look forward to them having an even brighter future as they emerge to reflect the growing cultural wealth of our corner of West London. Lastly, I encourage all our borough councillors to agree this motion, to participate in as many cultural, summer of culture events as possible and to encourage our residents to take part also, especially as they may get the chance to meet our lovely madam May. So have a great summer, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to speak, madam May.
Thank you, councillor Chopra. Councillor Giles?
Thank you, madam mayor. Like many of the motions that have come to us tonight, I have to wonder why. Back in 2018, 2019, this wasn't a motion for us to bid as a borough culture. We just did it. We just went ahead. We didn't have to do this political grandstanding, or as the Denison said in the last motion, use it as a platform. I've actually gone through my archives and looked at what we submitted for part of that consultation. And it was so much more than just the performing arts. We looked at our faith groups, what the environment in Chiswick was like during the war, the architectural impact, our entertainment, the festivals, our theatres and cinemas, so many of those groups, TV, live music, comedy, food and drink, art, horticulture, literary Chiswick or literary Hounslow, the impact of our open spaces, sport, the river, volunteering, our notable residents. We have 10 blue plaques in Hounslow. Only one of them is outside of Chiswick, and that is for Freddie Mercury, which is very right. But there are a tonne of notable residents that we could give a proper platform for. I'm glad that councillor Chopra noted the Art Centre Hounslow. It's, it's due to be homeless pretty soon. And we'd like to see where they're going to be going. It's fantastic they were able to put on this kind of gypsy-style roving theatre performance, which is beautiful. But again, I do have to wonder, like most of the motions we've had today, how is this going to be funded? Are we going to get money from our thriving communities fund? By doing what? There was an internet clip that went around of Sanji Baska, one of our notable residents and creator of Goodness Gracious Me, talking about how when he went to university, he said that he lived on the boundary of Chiswick because he didn't want to stay from Hounslow. That is certainly not something that I would be a proponent of, but it is unfortunately the mentality of so many people. We do have such a rich history in beyond, beyond the funding for the Seaman Water Museum and, and what Sky is doing. What about those smaller grassroots, the Andram organisations, the volunteer-led sports clubs that are getting our kids, teaching them, educating them about companionship? What about like the Scouts and Brownie Clubs and Girl Guides organisations? They all form such a vital part of our, our culture. There is so much that we can celebrate within our borough. And we do need to take the time. But do we need a motion for it tonight? I'm not entirely convinced. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Giles. Just to note, yes, councillor. Bruce.
I thought you were going to ask something else. I, like councillor Giles, am very proud to say I'm from Hounslow. I'm sure everybody here is as well. All the things that have been described this evening and more are absolutely part of what is important to me about Hounslow and I'm sure everybody else here and residents across the borough. When we're talking about our art centres, I think it's really, really important that we are clear that both of what we're talking about, that councillor Emsley was slightly, unfortunately, being misleading about what we're talking about, the art centre in Brentford and the art centre in, in Hounslow that councillor Chopra talked about. Both of those sites that we are talking about having a rejuvenated art centre on do not belong to Hounslow Council. They are in private ownership and it is for us to be trying to do our best to work with those owners to deliver these new art centres. It is almost certainly the case that the art centre in Brentford would probably be delivered by now if it wasn't for Liz Truss and Kwasi Kwarteng crashing the economy in 2022. It's not just, it's not just about that site. It is about delivery across the borough, across London, across the country, being far more difficult in the last three years, simply because of that, that impact that they had. So we lost a housing association. I say we, that the owners and Hounslow Council, we lost a housing association that pulled away from that tripartite agreement. And it has taken a number of months to re-engage another one, to engage with another one, sorry, and, and find a way through. Money is difficult. Money is tight in these schemes. It's hard to deliver that. We are talking to the owners of the Treaty Centre as well to look at what we can do in terms of having two quality art centres in this borough in the future. It is not easy. You know, these things take time and things that have happened to our economy in the past because of actions taken by the Tory government mean that we are where we are. So spades in the ground, you know, flags up a pole, whatever phrase you want to put. We are committed to delivering it. We could have taken the choice to say, do you know what, it's too hard and we won't do it. But the motion tonight is important is because we are committed to culture. I continue and we all continue to be committed to delivering arts and an art centre, two art centres in this borough, and we are committed to Hounslow. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bruce. If I could ask councillor Shaheen to sum up, please?
Thank you very much, madam mayor. And I think councillor Bruce said a lot of what I wanted to say. To address councillor Emsley's point about the art centre, and he does deserve an answer. I think he raises, raises absolutely fair questions and deserves a fair answer. So I ask him a question in return. Have you ever been to the Colosseum in Rome, councillor Emsley? If you had, would you stand there in the middle of the Colosseum? And would you say, oh, well, I think the planning took about three months longer to get signed off by Caesar than, than originally anticipated? Or would you do what everyone else would do? Hold out your arms to the heavens and go, are you not entertained? Well, you will have, even if it takes a little bit longer because of the planning process, we will have that world-class art centre and you will be entertained.
I'm, I must apologise, but I've made a faux pas. And councillor Smith did reserve her right to speak and did have a hand up that I missed. So I'm going to allow councillor Smith to speak, if that's okay. My apologies, councillor Smith.
So last year, I was honoured to be able to attend many cultural events across the borough, which really brought home to me what an amazing borough we live in. Council funding and the summer of culture have really helped these events flourish. We're a very diverse community and from the grassroots up, it was wonderful to see so much happening here. From festivals setting the history and culture of our diverse communities, including the Polish, Philippine and Goan festivals, to events that unite us all as one community, including the Winter Lights, community choirs and theatrical performances, including the annual pantomime. We are fortunate, we're fortunate to have so much happening. From the annual Freddie Mercury Celebration in Feltham to the Book Festival in Chiswick, wherever you are, there's so much to get involved with. Arts and culture can help preserve heritage and strengthen bonds, both within and between diverse communities. It can promote understanding between us and enhance our quality of life as well as drive economic growth. There is so much happening here in this borough and I look forward to participating as we develop and become a flourishing destination for arts and culture. So I'm pleased to second this motion and I look forward to further developments in our arts and culture scene, including the new art centre. And I think this is something we can all be proud of.
Thank you, councillor Smith. If you're happy with that, councillor Shaheen, I will move to the vote. Thank you. Can I ask for all those in favour? Thank you. Anybody in opposition? And any abstentions? Okay, so thank you. That motion is carried. That then takes us to agenda item 13. Any other matters that I consider urgent? There aren't any and haven't had any presented to me before the meeting. Therefore, the last agenda item then is the date of the next meeting. The next meeting of the council is scheduled for Tuesday, the 16th of September. So those of you taking a summer break, I wish you a very happy holiday. And otherwise, don't forget to sign the attendance book. Thank you very much.